Wait a minute.
It might be in my apartment, I don't know, I just, I leave things around, my assistants usually pick up after me. Like I can't find you for a couple of days.
That is really funny, I mean.
Yeah, me too.
I could find my laptop, I wouldn't do that.
No, I can't, share screen.
This thing like my. It's like my, this is my brain.
I'm ready to.
Oh.
Where is that?
This weekend.
Online, it's supposed to be online?
Yeah, you can start with.
Okay, everyone. According to the town clock, so I'd like all to order the regular workshop meeting, hybrid meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for June 29th, 2023. We do. Do you have any updates?
We do not.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion if everybody's ready to accept the June 15 minutes. On favor?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so on the communications and announcements, we have the traffic review and report from Steven Mafia, P E, and that's regarding the 11:05 route 28, which we received on June 21st. And if you. See that he agrees with what we said, that that entrance on and off 28 is not a good idea.
So we will, um, we gave that report that our traffic engineer did to 11:05 28 teams and we have everybody come back and we'll have a big old bash like we did again and bash it all out.
So at that point, we'll have to schedule another site.
Exactly, and I think at that point, it's right, like we were gonna hold because they were working on stuff, so now they're gonna do a little bit of a rebuttal to Steven Mafia's plan and we're probably gonna have to ask for more escrow because, yeah.
Yeah, it was a good report.
It was great, I'm very, yeah, me too.
You agreed completely with that exit on right past the traffic light.
It's perfect, yeah, and we'll bring him too, whether he's on Zoom or, or, you know, where he comes, either way, but we'll have him here too. And that, this is what escrow is for, you know, us to have a team, and did you get my email, we talked about forester, but Lori's willing?
Yeah, oh yes, very good idea, that's the greatest news yet ever.
I never thought you would.
We didn't do well with what we do with the forest.
I know, we have Mike and we have Lori, I'm about, I know, I was so excited.
Okay, so on the new business. Our meeting, and we have a forestry presentation by Todd Boglin as the Regional Forester of Urbanal Protection. Provides an overview of forests and water supply, Woodstock Forest lands, condition and concerns, the D E P forestry programs and inventory and management work, as well as architaph planning and protective processes. So, sir.
Hi.
Take it away.
Todd. New York City for almost 23 years now, and as a forest manager, regional forester for Schoharri basins. When I started, there was just two of us, now there's 13 forestry staff in our program, mostly reflective of the amount of land that the city now owns and they're required as part of the protection programs. So, um.
How much land do they?
And we may.
I'm sorry.
How much land do they own?
Oh, we're gonna talk about all that, and I got a lot of detail about Woodstock specifically, which is tied in everything that I brought to you here.
Is.
Let me just.
Is there a radio just? Anybody know? I've used power.
Do you wanna go to slides or view? Where you just see about there, under view, and then it'll say.
Slide show to the right, nope. The left now, one, no, three more, slide show to the left.
Ah.
And now click on the main slide.
From the start, from the beginning.
Yeah.
There you go.
Ha ha.
While I was working here, I spent six years with, in the Parks Natural Areas, New York City, through forest restoration, worked in Hudson Valley for years, also. Interestingly, about 37 years ago, I was in this room as a consultant, I've done work for years with helping landowners manage their lands in one of the projects, had to come for approval here, so it's, that's a long time ago, I'm strapped to say, I was only seven.
So. Can you move those? If we could just, do we mind, can we take them away?
Yes.
We do mind.
No.
No, we don't like it.
Take them away.
Bye bye.
She gets that little thing right with them.
Yeah, where is it?
Hi. Perfect.
All right.
I don't have to deal with talking, you're in there.
Sorry, folks. Yes, next space. Okay. Yeah.
Can you, you might better move it. We need your help again.
Oh, what's the matter?
Get rid of the rest of it.
Get rid of the rest of it? Oh, because of the mountain, okay, thank you.
All right, so here we're gonna be talking about today, hopefully there's video out there, video link and see, quick overview of the water supply itself, the importance of forest, of forestry. Our management program, inventory and plan, overall for the entire system, specific information on Woodstock lands, conditions and concerns that we have from the data we've gathered here in Iowa Waterlands in town, and then just our projects and how we. How we set up those projects, the process, et cetera, some of which will be coming before we're trapped here. Okay, here's the, the big overview, those miles, like the reservoirs, a billion gallons a day, half the people in New York State drink New York City water, including a million along the way to New York City, and. The reason it's the largest, best unfiltered water system in the world is due to the forests, so if you look up, I'm gonna use a pointer, I guess we can. Get a cursor there, oh, we just let up, you know, Schoharri reservoir is up here, and Shokin, Woodstock, and how did you get rid of the?
Smoothed the mouse out of there.
Out of that area, and it'll go later.
Oh, I just. Click on your PowerPoint slide.
Bring it down, click on the PowerPoint.
Click on your slide.
Just click on your map.
All right, guys.
No. Maybe.
That's not what we want, but, um, all right, so.
You wanted to.
So I got a lot of slides, I'm gonna go real fast, and we'll sit, we're not gonna do any questions, so we can get you to all your other issues and times tonight.
Yeah, Todd and I had a conversation, tonight is his presentation only, we can invite him back at a later date if we have questions, but we're not gonna bombard him.
Yeah.
He's had a long day, like, not me, but like Peter, so he's gonna breeze through this and we're gonna enjoy every minute, and then we can bring him back and anybody else can get in touch with him and get in touch with me to get in touch with him.
Yeah, and specific projects will be coming before the board at other times, and I'm also hoping to invite you and anybody else from the town to onsite to projects that were done on city lands around the Shokin, and talk about specific issues and things onsite, as well as at the end, I do give you my email address and myself or Charlie, who I'm the program manager, are gonna be glad to entertain you any questions. So, again, Tom, who's in the back here, and I are responsible for the Catskills system, Schoharri and Shokin reservoir, I've truncated that slightly here, Schoharri above, and of course, Shokin, you see this red area showing around Shokin, those are priority zones for acquisition of city acquired land, as you know, probably known in 1997, when I ran Greerville, all state towns, and other regions.
A little please, it's very hard to hear you.
All right, okay, yeah, but we got the mic over now, is that better?
Yeah, but you are going very, you're speaking very quickly.
Yeah, we're going to have to, to get these slides through in a, in the time slot, so I'll try to slow my voice down a little bit. So, if you look on the map there, you see some red areas, those are priority areas for acquisition of lands and around the reservoirs and intake, those are priorities, and then second, second, further down the list, priority areas too, is a lot of Woodstock, where, you know, it's highly developed, the lands are all tributaries that then feed into the reservoirs, and it's all about travel time when they prioritize their acquisition, you know, how long, how far is each property from the one directly entering the system and getting down to the, directly to the supply of the city, so. Here's ownership, blocked by. Again, but the city owns close, almost 180,000 acres now, which shocks me, because when I started, it was, it was just about 80, the original reservoirs acquired were only 60,000 and change, so to get 180,000 acres now, that's phenomenal, that's why we have 13 staff members for the forest. In Woodstock, you'll see 50%. Of the town is within the bounds of the drainage area for, for the watershed. Town's total land area is 43,000 acres and change, of that, the city owns five of them, which is pretty significant, 12% of the land, so. The other thing that's more significant is how much other protected land in the town, which, you know, 22%, which is primarily the forest preserve, of course. This is a satellite analysis of land cover, which qualifies as luminous leading sometimes, because residential often shows up as forests, but I think he did a justice in it, that all the green is forest, the citrus and citrus forest, dark green and white green, and so, I mean, Woodstock, this is the watershed area of Woodstock, is, you know, dominated by forests, so that's significantly important, we're gonna be talking about in a minute. The, the importance of the forest and the real. Is, is tremendous, as everybody knows, you start grabbing off what, what it contributes to your quality of life, and I've clarified a few of the qualities that the city's most interested in, which is, you know, the protection of, of the water supply, the high quality of water comes, the highest quality of water comes from forests, so, you know, when you have developed land, you don't wanna stand about runoff, you know, when your house, when it runs off the roof and runs down the driveway and runs into butter, and then directly into a stream. That's instantly washing all the, you know, residues and pollutants and fertilizers and everything right into the drainage and into directly into the water supply, and I like to usually use an example, I was out in Chesapeake watershed and never sink one day, there's a tremendous rainstorm, only two inches, I went back out to the main highway, Route 55, and it was raging, I mean, it was over top of driveways and the bridges, go back in the forest where we were working in headwaters, that didn't even show any appreciable increase in flow until the next day, so there's a, there's an attenuation of flow, and there's a slow filtration of water in forest habitat, that's why it's the most desirable, you know, because you don't want that wash of ooze and, of course, septic and sewage as well in developed lands, so. The other qualities are critically important for everybody, and. Number two is forest, the cost of forest to towns is very low, relative, you know, I, I still am amazed that rural towns say we need to develop more so we get more, a greater tax base, but it's been, it's been proven for decades that increased development is a greater cost to the communities than, than the vacant lands are, you know, what services does the forest demand? It doesn't demand schools, it doesn't demand any of the government, very little of the government interaction, library, you know, the library when you're forest, you know, there's, you just go, whatever your tax base is, think about that, and what the forest, what a forest landowner demands for them, and it's very different from the, the developed lands and, and the services that are needed to support them. So, cities recognize this, well, not just the city, but the EPA and Department of Health, New York State, and they're all, they're in all our plans and filtration avoidance determination, which is allowing us to purchase lands and proceed with protection that will keep the land clean for clean water for most of the residents, residents of the state. So, um, the 97 memo and agreement I mentioned that allowed us to buy lands and, you know, for willing sellers. Was all in agreement with these agencies, and they all recognize that forests are core components of the, of the ecosystem protection program for the future, so that's why we're likely to purchase those lands. At the same time, there was discussion, sit down, discussion about, again, how, what's the important facets of. For management of those lands, and, you know, again, all agree, it's the preferred land cover of water. One thing you'll know when I have my booklet here, the best management practices for the protection of logging operations and forest management, these are all optional best management practices, and other than we're law, and there's a reason for that, because the relative impact of pollution from forest land uses is minimal compared to other impacts that we just talked about, so. A lot of people may hear me say this, but even the worst logging job is better than the best development, because it might happen once every 20 or 50 years, and it's a temporary impact, even the worst job, you know, if you use your B N Ps and prevent any impacts from erosion and sedimentation, then, then, you know, it's even less, but. That those. You know, the. What was the point I was making here, sorry? Yeah, so that, that is basically a negligible nonpoint, so it's just lowest on the list, again, we already talked about why forest land use is preferred, and that's why. It, the discussion at that time, the importance of retaining forests, and how important it was to, to discourage higher taxes and prohibitive regulations, because the more that discourages people from keeping their forests, you know, the more, more rural landowner cannot afford to keep their land by supporting it with activities, economic activities from the forest, then the more likely it is to be subdivided and, and converted to other ranges, and this is a trend that's been noted across the country, the Forest Service is very concerned about the long, especially in the change of generations when it splits into multiple family owners and lands then get sold and subdivided to, you know, so they can. Capitalize on their, on their, on their value, and anyway, it's a trend that's of great concern all throughout it across the country, and especially this region, so retention of industry is important, because you wanna maintain that economy that supports the landowners, that keep forest forest, same concept there is just talking about, and. Then they also discuss how the public land should be provided model for sound management, what's sustainable then, and what's good management that people should be completing on their lands, and that's one of the missions of our program. The Dairy Planning Federation and the D E C has recognized the same concepts as the Minnesota Forest Union of State issued for people to guide their town laws and things, and the right to access forestry was put in place for the same reasons in 2003, it's very similar to right to farm law, in that, you know, they, they're not, that law should not, should be reasonable and accommodate good forestry or sustainable forestry, and. And that every concrete answer plan or master plan should outline what those, that the regulations should be in accordance to facilitate for, for sustainable forestry in the towns, and that's not known, it's too many towns where we meet the plans, but it's something, it's just like affordable housing, right, it's supposed to be included in the plans to, to at least discuss and designate how you're gonna handle that in your long-term plans. Okay, getting more specific to the city's management, when I started here, there was very little information, you know, it was acres and very little detailed data, we, in 2011, we did a cargo watershed, one plot for every 10 acres, it was over 10,000 plots at the time, and got details about what condition forests are in, including a lot of the Woodstock area, and here's a list of some of the issues that we have really high forest tree species diversity right now, it's excellent. The age structure is another matter, it's mostly dominated by mature and over mature forests, that's a regional trend as well, in the northeast, especially Hudson Valley, density and competition is high, and deer impacts are severe, in this area. Deer impacts on the scale that we use, which is just a simple one to five, one is totally healthy, diverse, fully vegetated forests, two, five, which is no trees grown whatsoever, maybe a beach or mountain or a thoroughhouse by deer, basically your diversity there is, you know, rocks and sticks, but, so in that scale, all of, most all of Shokin and Woodstock area were fours and fives, the worst and the highest impact by wind killed deer browse, and I'll show you some examples of that later. Skip some things, yeah, I did, so. For the future, you know, we wanna be sure that there's a functioning ecosystem, so what does that mean, mostly that it generates itself naturally, we were also concerned about resistance and resilience, that, you know, if you have a forest that's, also we'll show you about the age structure in a minute, we have a forest that's dominated by mature old forests, and it's all closed forests in the hurricane. And it's all in the same condition of dense over stocks, old age, it's very likely to get blown, whereas if you're sad, all different age structures, groups, it's much less prone to get a major catastrophic blowdown, pest problems that would affect the whole, and we've seen it with Gypsy Muff and other defoliators this year, and so. Diversity is the name of the game, diversity of species to occupy every niche that come, that develops over time, the age structure of different ages because of susceptibility and resistance, and then renewal, we wanna have. Have it renew itself, and the, you know, fairly high health and. And the low risk of catastrophic events that could impact water directly, so, okay, this just shows a couple even age stands, most of our forests is in this condition where it's a closed canopy, some exclusion they call it, the one, both these are on the same property in Woodstock, the one up top is, you know, only 40 years old, the one on the bottom is probably 110 years old, but all in the same condition, it's abandoned farmland, so it's all the same age, because it regenerate at the same time, it became a closed forest with all the same age trees, that doesn't mean they're all the same diameter, but in the same, same age, and competition is pretty fierce, so. Okay, here's more about age structure, and the thing to understand here is, look at how old our forests are, and if. Different species live different ages, you know, birch, an aspen only lives to 60 or 80 years, oak slips 100 years, but once you get around 100 or 120 or so, it's considered a fairly old age forest, and you start to see where the forest will go from that closed canopy, you start having disturbances where gaps develop, the trees die off, and competition, and weather and pest events eventually take its toll, so. In this case, you can see by, by age on the left or by height, which is also very similar in age. Directly with age, they both show the same pattern, we're really in a mature forest throughout, this is, this is all the lands in Shokin, so what, what concerns me the most in this picture is when you look at what's 50 or 60 and less, what do you see, just about nothing, you know, so our age structure is all in that same condition, again, that's a regional trend, and even in the whole northeast, but particularly the Hudson Valley, where, you know, land abandonment all at the same time, or preservation all at the same time, or buying of watershed, water surrounding the reservoirs all at the same time, all the forests are almost the same age, and that's, it's not really a good situation, it's not what would be a natural situation in, in, in forests, you know, over time, because of disturbances that would involve different age. So I'm a little, we're concerned about that, what's great is the diversity of species, and here you see by color, you know, the size or the composition of species, by species, now, the important thing in brown is other, down below is lists, I think there's 12 or 15 others, all desirable, native, healthy trees, and this is what we'd like to see forever, is to have as many species as possible, every species occupies a different niche in the forest, if you have a blowdown or a fire or a pest problem, or you just lose one tree from old age. And you're in one, one kind of soil or another kind of soil, each species fills a different niche, so the more species you have, the more likely are to be in a filled niche of whatever happens in the future, so that's a high priority for us is diversity of species, and however. This shows a little more detail, these are, both slides are all Woodstock specifically. If you look on the right four bars, these are the different size classes, large trees, medium, small, old sizes, slick, I forget, ten inches less, and saplings being, you know, less than four inches, and seedlings, of course, on the ground, but on the right, in the center and right, you see a lot of diversity, and again, that brown at the top is the other, correct? Yeah, and that's got 15 more species in there, whereas when you go to the left and the ceilinging saplings, first of all, we saw they're very little of, out there at all, there's very few young age classes, the other there, which constitutes about a third of the ceiling category. And you should note too, at the same time, the dark blue is beach, which constitutes a third, so two thirds of our forest there is dominated by beach, which is, you probably know, is not doing very well, beach bark disease and now beach leaf disease, it never becomes a healthy tree due to these invasive pests that we have that are affecting, but the other category here is dominated by two or three other species, only, not 15 species like we have in the larger category, and all of those are species that deer don't eat. So, you know, long term, what problem do we have, that we don't have sea, diversity of seedlings and saplings developing, we don't have much young forest to begin with, you know, of course, we do have a very low diversity of species, and that's, that's a long-term concern, because again, we wanna maximize the species out of all the, you know, as many on, on site as possible to occupy whatever can happen in the future, so. I think I'll skip over this, I've forgotten some technical, but both of those, first one, the forestry terms are, are, mean that the forest is generally very large, very large trees overall and very dense, they might not seem very large or very dense, but when you have a forest at the top, there's so many different sized trees in the forest for it to be over 11 inches in diameter on average, most of the trees are small, that's really fairly high. So when you're looking at maximizing carbon storage and growth, or you're looking at health, you know, you wanna a, a lot lower average diameter density, I'll just leave it at that, and it's too complicated to get into too much, but the big ones for you guys probably understand and even know about is that 58% of the plots in Woodstock are medium or high abundance of invasive and interfering species that, that, those three, three or four species I was talking about. Dominate the small, the young age classes, and down below, there's one, there's two of them, right here is barberry on the bottom, photo there on the right is Japanese barberry, on the left is Asiatic birch tree. Both of those are species that deer don't eat. So. The thing to look at in this slide, number one, we have a closed forest, but what are you seeing on the ground? Just what we were talking about, nothing, little to nothing, which is, and it's interesting, because at my in this river gorge where I used to work, there are pictures documenting what the forest was like in the 1950s, and in those days, you couldn't go off the trail, because the understory, even in closed forest, was so dense that you couldn't walk through there, and, and, you know, that's, that's what we should be seeing, but instead, if you look real carefully, you're at about five feet high, there's a line, right, a straight line right across, where the tree, the leaf, leaves are only five feet and higher, and I think you can figure out that that's because that's about the height that deer average, you know, browse line is, and what do you see on ground, and there should be, need be some herbivorous plants and thing, nothing, zero, and this is not a healthy situation. So, here's another one, you can see the line once again, in this case, here's a gap where large trees have fallen, you should be getting in normal gap phase replacement in, you know, ecological process that occurs in a healthy ecosystem, you should be getting trees and shrubs coming up in that gap, and we have a few grasses, and I think there's one beach ceiling that's chewed almost to death in the middle, right at the base of the stump, and that's their least preferred species to eat is deer's beach, so when you're seeing that, you've got a problem. And that's their least preferred species to eat is of yours beach. So when you're seeing that, you've got a problem. Uh, what happens next? This is east, all east, the Hudson. Uh, watershed pictures on the bottom right. We had the four M L dashboard, we had ash decline, ash yellows, which filled extensive areas of ash. This was an. Entirely Nash stand and um with the deer populations down there eating. You know, the diversity of native species that should be generating in that gap. We have no forest. We have Asiatic bittersweet. Left, the barberry probably could be in the Harrowman Park or other places. This is a trend. Um, there was a really interesting report out very recently that the. On the national parks and I think it was two thirds or so of the national parks that started, they're documenting now are having basically catastrophic. Regeneration. There's, there's not, there's not successful regeneration occurring. So. Doing nothing and preserving is is great in some aspects, but not for the long term. You know, the long term uh future of forests. With the, with the conditions that we've created with invasive species and then. What do we want to see? This is another place now, which is county fence. Okay, so what have we got? This is what I was talking about, about how it should look in most under stories and. I was mostly keyed in for this one. They took us to Pennsylvania for training. And took us to an area which looked like those other pictures I showed them. I said, oh yeah, it's just like home. It's a, must be a pretty dry or forest soil. And oak forest, that's why there's nothing on the ground, but it took us in the same stand, a place that had a fence around it. And it was so, it was dense like this. You couldn't walk through in every tree that's in that cap and the. Overstory categories I was talking about, it's fifteen, twenty five, every tree and shrub was in that fenced area. And the lowish blueberry, which out here you're lucky if you see it a foot high, was like three and four feet high. What were various tulip poplars growing up to there is, and it was really, you know, eye opening. So this is what we're looking for, you know, have many forest structure, we call it, you know, that. So when you get a gap, you're getting replacement by native species and functioning uh replacement. So. What, how does the city decide what to do and where? This is an outdated map of the pit and says the main thing is that I'm showing that we are able to classify our lands from our database of inventory data. Of what condition they're in and we can cross things whether it be age or size or um. Conditions of all different sorts and can do shading or we can find out which ones intersect and where the most important areas of concern are. And um. That data managing now that manages all this and in this case, the important thing, I guess, to, this is an older diagram, but the reds. And the uh purples and the yellows all came out as important for those reasons that I was just mentioning. And uh I've been working on the Chalk River reservoir for twenty years. And most of those red areas have been worked, have been treated already to so that we have new regeneration in those areas where they were overstocked or had a. You know, lack of regeneration and um. Um, and uh or other problems that we had addressed at M L dashboard set up that we were concerned about losing and um. So um. The uh yellows are also on there and where what we do is we look at where are these different categories of condition overlap and. Decide, you know, at a scale, at a large scale, where are these are. These are just various projects that are occurring already in the watershed with all the different forests who's working on projects and. And I'm going to talk a little bit more specifically about projects. We uh. When we decide where those areas are that would should work, the comprehensive process of assessing what should be done there and um. I'm running out of time, so I'm going to just skim through, but basically you notice that most of the impact categories there. Are similar to what's in in Seeker. That's of course because we're applying compliance with Seeker, our management plan has to be in compliance with Seeker. As an agent, as a public agency and every project has to adhere with the conditions that. Then with with um that, so uh. You know, aside from assessing the conditions first, we then go. Through all the regulatory requirements and and contacts and interaction with the local towns as well. All waters, wetlands, stormwater concerns, endangered species, we do our own sampling for endangered bats. We uh crucial sampling, we have our own wetland specialists who can land in the wetlands because as you know, the local wetland industry maps are often inaccurate. They either don't have what ones that do, it exists on land or the ones that are shown are not accurate, we'll wear them okay. So we we completely remap all of us on. Our conservation practices, which we require to adhere to generally go above and beyond most local. Um, regulations and uh. You know, we have our, we have special exclusion, special lands stolen, so along the lands, streams, neighbors, roads, et cetera. And as long as we can comply with our own. Conservation practices document. That requires at least permits, then we're still applied with the secret negative declaration for the whole. Where that's already been, you know, reviewed, so. Oh yeah, all projects are written contracts with with harvesters and then we're, we're the oversight cycle, being planning people are also. The planners of the project and the oversight as well. It's really unique to be in these jobs, this job, because that's everything from the beginning to the end. Um, just, this is just our staff that's involved in the process. It's not just foresters deciding what to do. Our wetland scientists, aquatic ecologists, streams people, wow, this is all our staff persons that are required to go on the field reviews. Way in on the project and make changes that that uh, you know, provide least impact. Yeah, and this is the property in Woodstock where we've been looking at and um. A good example here with the wetlands and streams at the top are not inaccurate. On this map they are now with a little wetland in the bottom. Left was, didn't exist on any maps, it's now mapped. Existing logging trails that were there, some should have never been used, they're already spring seeds, you know, so they needed to be rerouted. You know, we go through a comprehensive plan and we lay out where the best management practice should be located. Is or or um. Improve, interest improvements, uh water bars, those things that are in there are D M P guidelines to for protection order. I'll go through just a couple of examples. This is a woodstock property here, fantastic forest here on the left. That I recommend we reserve, trying to preserve and and manage as a, as a reserve forest, however. Relative density, I could talk to you about the relative density uh of our forest and the relatives at your Thanksgiving table. If you have, if we have this measurement of density and you know, if this table is fully occupied by. By your relatives, since you're my bosses, but all those relatives were eighty years old. What's going to happen to your Thanksgiving celebration in the future? That's a lot of the situation like I was showing you in charge of the age structure. It's like you have one kid at the end of the table. He's not going to be very happy in about twenty years when all those eighty year old relatives are not around or there's one left and no other. Company that they want. That's what you can expect in this forest on the left. So you got to prepare for the future of thinking about what's going to happen, you know. If you did have a catastrophic wind event, that is going to be the first forest that gets blown down. At the same time, it's exceptionally beautiful forest and uh what you want to start to do though is get a ceiling. Uh, get ceiling regeneration started with a little more sun in there and favoring the trees that are there to be more wind firm and healthy and have a good root systems. Maybe cut down on the competition slightly. Um, in this situation here, this is actually logging with stock before, it's a logging trail. Those hemlocks are number one, they're not, they're not a hemlock site, they're up upland dry and hemlocks have low moisture. And cool habitat and uh what else? We have invasive pests, uh leidellia, scale insects. You shouldn't be able to see through a hemlock forest like that. You shouldn't see sky at all. In a healthy hemlock forest, it's because they're offsite, it's because they got major pest problems. However, there's a lot of other hardwoods in there that wouldn't do well with sites. And in this case, you know, you've got tulip poplar in the bottom right. And uh birch, which those need full sun to regenerate. You know, if you have one tree, if you thinned or did select, some people talk about selection, cutting on the left, you're not going to ever get birch. Or tulip poplar or oak or half the species that are here now that we're creating, you know, we're got here because of the use and abuse in the past of of. Through agriculture and um. And disturbance. Here's a couple areas we've worked before on the left, there's actually three generations, most of the older forest has been removed that since the nineteen eighties. And we have three, like two, three age groups here are already developing, new one in the middle, where the lead, fur, more seasons now. Right is a little less, I think it's two, two cuts have occurred in there. This is one a lot of people like to talk about. I've heard rumors how D E P doesn't know if they're doing a national forest, uh right on on Route twenty eight. We clear cut the uh screws there at the Pine View Bakery. First of all, it wasn't pine, I have to say, that is screws. But, but it was planted six feet apart. And the trees are a hundred twenty feet tall with six foot root systems and. They, if they had pinned it out, it could have been left forever, but it had never been touched in a hundred twenty years. And we've already seen dozens of stands like that go down in winds. So this one's right next. To the highway, right next to a parking area and the entire utility lines from the entire valley up to Bel Air go right by. And we know, we know it's. It's happened in many other sites, so. The boss at the time said, well, this is the time to do it and we did it and we took a lot of flack, but. Guess what? We've got now, which is only uh. I don't know, it's five years later. On the right there, bottom right, same, same site. There's fifteen species of trees coming up in that gap. And that's what got us the forest that we have now. Is the same kind of disturbance, but this is a controlled disturbance, so you know, we can. Protect the slate while we're doing the work and in that is also oak and maple. We never see oak and maple, the deer won't be willing to large oak. And and if they do, there's so many, so much for them to eat. They can't possibly eat everything that's coming up at the same time. So D E C and Autumn and other nature conservancy are all. You know, in agreement that their guidelines is to use these larger patches to allow. This to occur to get successful regeneration, diversity of species and um it's paid off in other ways too, our bird of. Our wildlife staff is another thing with more of the orbiters and other species that need this lower growth. Under, you know, such as you see here in the forest to to proliferate and uh. This was actually super strong sandy. This blew, this is one of those series that blew down on its own. We did salvage the wood there. And uh this is a few years later, same situation. We got great regeneration and new generation forests that's on sway. You know, this, we've gotten ahead of the deer by overwhelming them. Um, this is an area that's had three harvests already since I've been here. And same thing, we have oak and pine and birch and all the species we want to see coming out. And this is, you know, this is what I love to see because this is why we do what we do. We want to see that future forest set for the next hundred years, you know, that's what we're planning to do and unfortunately, I I hate to say it, but. Even things D E doesn't, doesn't do, then you saw some of the early pictures with invasive species and the deer problems. It it and selective. Selective harvesting, which really isn't. A process in full professional forestry, that usually means we select the best and leave the rest, the log, it's a longer term. But a lot of towns have embraced that because it just needs a perpetual cut. You really need to have a plan for what's the regeneration and you're trying to achieve and how are you going to get it and um. That's about it. You know, it's probably a little too long, but uh I'm trying to cram a lot of information in there. Like I said, I hope. Uh, we'll have some projects coming down quite very soon. I think there's going to be some discussion how. How that's handled here with, you know, with our process and and town's process, you know. We we comply with all regulations, even despite, despite the Kingston. Uh, you know, the Kingston history of of being exempt from town laws, but that's not the way the city operates, you know, we're in compliance with what the town. Recommends and uh is good neighbors and that's part of this whole. Process of being here today, a lot of few project proposals coming in the bike in the future and um. I'd like to also invite you all out to the field, to some of those areas that we showed there if you have further questions. Or, you know, want to see what we're talking about on the ground in the future. So um. Uh, like I said, I don't, we're going to let you guys get on with your business, but um. I didn't put my email there.
Everybody can contact me if you want to get ahold of Ty, like I know how to get ahold of him.
We're glad to follow up with emails particularly or, you know, specific concerns or if you want to see more of a certain slide or something, oh there we go. So um. It's about it for tonight and um.
Well, thank you very much. That was very informative.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Glad to be here, appreciate you having me. We'll be seeing you in the future.
We're definitely interested in uh take visits and whatever you got for us.
Yeah, there's a couple sites. I'd like to go to that Pine, Pineview Bakery site with people. There's also two or three projects adjacent to that. And different than the clearing that we did there. And you can look at that. There's also, I don't know how long most of you've been around, but. When I first came with the Catskills up in Boyceville by Steve Heller's place there, uh. There was a major. Clear cut there years ago and it was a huge controversy and so actually was why the city now has a professional forestry program. Because it was demanded that the city have professional forests on hand, an engineer should be doing timber harvests. Um, and uh anyway. That's been, what, since nineteen eighty? So we're talking forty, almost fifty years after that and it's really phenomenal area to go visit, see what happens over time. Um, but so I'd recommend those, if it's, if you're interested, let me know, we'll then pass it up the chain and the land. To arrange some kind of visits out there where it's convenient for people. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Yes.
Hey, that fits in with our critical environmental area program where we.
Be quiet, I did a good job.
Sure, sure.
Here, if you're like, move back over here.
Okay, so. You have a question and answer with Nan. Regarding the H O T F zoning revision proposals for a final wrap up. So um. You know, Melissa has uh kept us informed as this went along. All right, with revisions to the proposals. And then we had a question. At the last meeting where uh board members got to ask. Questions about some of the codes, proposed codes. So I guess we're on the final stretch, so uh board members would like to ask Nan questions about. Specifics of the proposals or if you would like to present them and then ask. Well, um. You know, Melissa had a list of things that we, what we called the pros and cons that we went through. Basically in two sections, it's the rules and laws that set the, involve subdivision regulations. Conservation subdivision and so on. And then we have proposals to development uh proposals with. And uh. And uh. Apartments and so on. So um. Uh, ready to present the A T F, Valerie, to the town board, correct, and for the final round?
He's at H O T F. I think they're still in process. Probably they just recently they got back from the county, the county recommendations.
Yes, county recommendations.
So then I think there'll be another, but the town board has requested our feedback. So this is basically where we're at. It's going to change again. There's, there are things, the last meeting we talked, a few of our concerns, they had. You'll go through the list and be like, yep, we've already dealt with that, we've dealt with that, um.
And then there's other boards and committees that are also coming back. The housing committee just met last night, they'll be submitting their. Could, you know, comments, uh company streets that uh earlier this week. Also, and they'll be submitting their comments. Um, you know, the planning board's comments are, I think, are the primary interest to us because you. You all live on the front lines of. you all live on the front lines of the code and deal with the code, and so uh, you're familiar already with one, and two, your concerns about any, any of the uh, things that are proposed. We would love to hear and understand what those concerns are, and that's why we're here today, I think.
Primarily, we deal with subdivisions, we deal with lot line revisions, zoning enforcement doesn't. We handle all of that, um, so the bulk and rig table that we look at, we use every day, is, it's really important, and, you know, yours experience and looking at it, I'm not talking me, I'm talking you, um, it is important, and that's, you know, like Peter said, I kind of tried to sum up and hear what everybody said and then put it into one thing. But where they're at is, it's a process. They're, they're getting there, but there's, they want our comments, there will be a public hearing, at some point it'll go to the state, they're not at their final yet, so I'm sure when they get to the final, we'll have another review, but this is the nuts and bolts of the beginning of this. And this is where they're really trying to form a document that will be the town board and that we will be using.
Yeah, that's fairly accurate. I, I think that the cycle that we're in right now, Peter and company, is that uh, the comments are, are coming in, as we stated, uh, from boards and then also private residents, uh, they're expressing their interest and concerns and questions. Um, all of those are being addressed, we're assembling those comments and organizing them and addressing them. Um, many of the changes that we've made uh, thus far have been because of the county requirements, and then also, um, we have three requirements from them. And then two, uh, there were some, when there's a large amount of comments about something specific, um, such as in payment in lieu of, uh, that caused us to, to make that change, and we've made that change, we removed it. Uh, there's no more, uh, in payment in lieu for developers.
Okay.
Um, in terms of payment in lieu of having, uh, being mandated to.
And option, yeah.
As an option. Uh, we will review all the changes that we have made as a result of your comments and everyone else's comments at a time that probably will be sometime later on in the summer. And then you'll have the opportunity to see what those changes actually are and if they align with your expectations, uh, which is what we would hope to achieve, and I think part of what we'll do, Nan, is that we will come back to you, showing you after we've heard your concerns and received your report, we'll come back to you and, and state to you where those changes are made, discussions we've had, um, any, any issues we may have with those comments, and we'll discuss them further with you. So that's our, that's our process.
I think we have present, I'm not sure, some members of the Z V A, I think Jude is.
Yeah, Jude, I do, I think Jude is here.
And I, I know she has some questions, so Jude, if you want to ask some questions, please go ahead.
I'm working on it, I'm on your.
Okay, hi Jude.
Hi guys, you know, um, just for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jude Solato, I'm on the Z B A and the Zoning Revision Committee. I also was a member of the Planning Board in the nineteen nineties. Um, some of my things are questions, some of my things are comments, I just wanted to address the Planning Board, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm going to start out with a quote. Michael Stroper, an economist at UCLA, said, "Housing is an area with the law of unintended consequences is most powerful." So what we know for sure is that these revisions will, will permit more and more housing and the increases in density that will have negative impacts on our environment. Woodstock has always been a magnet for New Yorkers, but now we are seeing developers come to our area from Florida. Connectia recently bought Coleman for development of a hundred and twenty hotel rooms, sixty apartments and retail space. It's probable that these are not going to be affordable. Investors from Russia and Canada have purchased homes for investment in Woodstock. The word is out that the area is increasingly a magnet for expat New Yorkers. Land is expensive, building is expensive, roads and driveways are expensive, drilling wells is expensive, septic systems are expensive, landscaping is expensive, drainage is expensive. You get the picture. Who can afford to do this? Wealthy developers that have profits in mind. I could be here all night going through the revisions, but I'm just going to highlight a few things. Nan, I don't know if you've ever been to Woodstock, but the bulk of Woodstock, especially the western part of town, consists of rocky slopes, mountain streams, and narrow and hilly roads. The western part, and we, I just learned this from uh, the presentation that just happened, fifty percent of the town is in the New York City watershed, that has strict land, meaning expensive, requirements for septic systems. And he mentioned that forests are preferred over development because they're trying to retain the purity of their land. And as, you know, and their water, as we are, you know, those of us who have wells and, um, and live in these areas where it's hard to keep the water clean. As for deed restrictions, they're difficult to enforce, and everyone knows that enforcement is a challenge. So uh, first I'd like to talk about accessory apartments, as you call them, A D U's. Alster County Planning Board made recommendations for changes yet. The H O T F removed the owner occupancy requirement, um, to be able to construct an accessory apartment. Um, so now, essentially, there can be three market rate rentals on one property. I know I heard the discussion that the H O T F had about, and, and the Alster County Planning Board, that the first A D U could not be uh, S T R. However, what's to stop them from making the main house an S T R? The revisions remove the lot coverage and density requirements. So I'm going to say, don't change what the current law has, allow only one accessory apartment, keep the size limitations, keep owner occupancy requirements, and keep the limits on lot coverage. Okay, three plexes and four plexes, which is called middle housing. And it's referred to in a lot of books and articles written as missing middle housing. And um, research it, okay? They are those three plexes and four plexes that I dialed, they're meant for cities. Remember the old two family and triple deckers we used to see in cities? They're meant for walkable, excuse me, walkable areas in cities. Other than the center of town, what's walkable in Woodstock? It's going to strain our water supply, septic systems, drainage roads are narrow and often mountain roads, and all that parking in rural neighborhoods. They're not suitable for rural areas, nor are they recommended for rural areas. Co-housing. Can have sixty units with water sewer, forty units without, plus up to fifty percent bonuses. They are allowed to have a church or other places of worship, private schools, daycare centers, nursery schools, and so on. Why does this affordable housing plan make allowances for these non-housing uses? Who are we trying to attract with this? Floating residential districts. They can be mobile homes, tiny houses, can have single, two, three, four plex units and other multifamily units and co-housing. They can have A D U's on top of the number of allowed units. So my question is, where would Woodstock accommodate all this density? Mapping and geospatial analysis on the website, so I pulled off the map and I looked at it. And this is what it says, it says, "Analysis results for minimum eight-unit multifamily affordable housing potential." So on the map, there are areas that are shown in the scenic overlay. Lots that have houses and buildings already on them, lots in the New York City watershed, and lots on private roads. So I don't understand why all these lots are shown as potential locations for multifamily housing when they are not. These revisions have a lot of loopholes and mistakes, and a complete lack of foresight for unintended consequences. This proposal to upzone Woodstock will not create affordable units, and it's a huge mistake. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Jude.
Thanks, Jude. Yeah, well, that's some aspects from members of the Z V A. From the planning board's perspective, it is, leaves the planning board with a lot of latitude and leeway as to what we um, can ask developers. Wettland's Law gives us quite a bit of latitude. Bamakers was to take a huge, huge subdivision, that was the first major subdivision we've done in almost fifteen, twenty years. Able to get the best protection of the land that we could. I think the planning board's issue is that we put restrictions on development, th- we, there's no guarantee that that's going to be followed in the years to come, I, I guess, you know, we say it's a revision, but uh, for the planning to work to put conditions on a subdivision, very hard to control those. And one of the things we liked about this uh, conservation concept was that even though a lot may be large, that the development on it had to be restricted, uh, because of no factors. But there's no way that we know of to really restrict it, I mean, if somebody owns twelve acres of land, you know, unless somebody puts a, a fence across, there, there's really nothing to prevent people from uh, developing on their land. So that, that's one of the issues that the planning board has to, to deal with when we, when we put those kind of restrictions. And that's the subdivisions, which we already have quite a bit of latitude on. I, the issue we all deal with, if it's a five acre zoning, then, then it's a five acre lot, uh. As far as the other issues go, as far as housing, affordable housing and cluster units, um, A D U's, I asked members of the board to chime in on that, because um, if, if these laws, changes went into effect, that's what the board would be dealing with. First, man just said, our real issue is to stop development, we really want to. So trying to find ways to make it easier, uh, more, is sort of against the overall. There's only so much land that's easily developable, the rest of it's mountainsides and forests. We really don't want to develop. To ask Nan, who is the planner, and Kirk, who is presenting a lot of this, if you have questions about, you know, one, one of the issues that town is concerned about, or people have heard of, this may open the door to more development. Because you can allow more A D U's, you can allow more cluster housing, and is, is a, is some beneficial person going to come along and say, oh yeah, I'll, I'll do this for everyone, or is someone going to say, whoopee, I can put four units on a property, or three units on a property, and sell them or rent them, so. You guys ask Nan, Kirk, what you think?
I mean, it's like, I'm hearing it's, there's two, it's like balancing the need for more housing and also minimizing, you know, the, the development, but the clusters, um.
You think it's on the board?
Uh, Judith has not muted.
Thank you, guys, sorry.
So I'm just trying to, you know, just take, take it all in, but the, so minimizing development, but also trying to fulfill the, the housing need. So, I mean, logically, I would just say like the cluster approach seems to make sense because you're maximizing looking at the view and enjoying, you know, that without spreading out and taking up more space. But it seems that it, we, we would really have to really set some fair rules on making sure that, you know, people don't take advantage, you know, of like making it into an opportunity just to have like an opportunity to capitalize on that somehow, so, I don't know.
What are some ways that it would be, we would be able to enforce covenants or restrictions in perpetuity?
Uh, so a couple things, um, from an, for a broad enforcement perspective, the planning board has no authority to enforce.
Absolutely.
You know, that you, when you sign that you approve something, whether it's a subdivision or a site plan, you, in, you place your conditions, hopefully via a resolution.
Always.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, um, that, that is where your authority ends, so you, you can't be in the enforcement business. That's the town's, that's the enforcement, right, so there's no doubt that enforcement is a critical part, and I know at the task force, they've talked about the need for enhancing enforcement in the town. It's not just in Woodstock, it's everywhere that would, that enforcement is, uh, is an area that needs, um, needs work, and there's, you know, uh, anything in the zone is just a piece of paper if you don't have the, the oomph behind it to enforce it. That oomph comes from ensuring that there's adequate staff to enforce it, training of those staff, commitment on the town board's part to enforce the laws. Um, so it's, you know, there's lots of communities that have lots of laws on the book, and then the town kind of looks the other way, and the enforcement officer looks the other way. Yeah, I mean, that, to make anything in zone work, you have to be able to be willing to say, these are our rules, and we're going to follow it. From the planning board's perspective, though, you can help that process, you can help the process by ensuring that the resolutions that you pass and the approvals that you give are clearly laid out with the conditions clearly articulated, that those conditions be placed on the plat, you know, how like a plat has the plat notes on the side? So that these things become part of the formal record, so in twenty years, when, you know, it's a totally different planning board, whoever is, is getting that plat from the county, the, you know, the future buyer, that is right, it's written right on the plat. Um, so you can memorialize your decisions in a really concrete way. The other thing in terms of who enforcement, who enforces uh, deed restrictions, I mean, I guess, guess it depends on whether it's an easement or a deed restriction, an easement, which, um, like a conservation easement, which we talked about in the conservation subdivision section, is, is a legal document that, um, that takes away the development rights from whatever land you've placed that easement on, and the easement holder enforces that easement, and the easement holder could be the town. It's most usually an environmental or a land trust kind of organization, and that's why easements have most of the time, they have annual inspections, they have a, a legal document that lays out exactly what can and cannot happen in, in that easement. And when you work through a land trust, that's what a land trust does, is it makes sure that the, uh, the conditions that are placed on that easement are followed through. Towns are eligible to be the easement holder, but they would have the same responsibilities as a land trust to make sure that the terms of that easement are followed through over time. Um, deed restrictions, from an environmental perspective, are, um, less concrete, because the deed restriction is in the deed, and it's, so it's the, it's the responsibility of the deed holder, whoever owns that land, to know what's in their deed and follow through on it. Um, when it comes to deed restrictions, however, for housing, kinds of requirements where we're saying these are units that are deed restricted for, um, in, to meet in the income brackets that we talked about. That's why there is a section in the zoning that talks about the requirements long term. And, and just like enforcing any other rule that you have in the town, there has to be a mechanism to follow up and enforce those things over time. So I don't want to minimize or poo-poo the concerns about enforcement, but there has to be a commitment on the town's part.
Does our town have those kinds of commitments?
Are there towns that have that?
No, does our town?
Well, I think that's a very good question, excellent question. And one of the things that has come out and will come out of this effort is a series of what we're calling non-zoning policy recommendations that goes, that will go to the town board. And that's been now placed in the hands of the housing committee. And they are taking that up right now that they've finished statement this week to talk about the code. They're now taking up that specific document and expanding it. And much of the top priorities of the recommendations are around enforcement. And so there is, for instance, there's a recommendation, the town currently has one of its code enforcement, there's being a wetlands inspector and they're not certified as a wetlands inspector, that particular individual.
I think he is now.
But he is now? Okay, I'm sorry, I misspoke then. So there's a, there's been an update since then, and that's great.
I believe that he had gotten that.
Got that certification, but so the concern is that, you know, the list of all the other responsibilities that that same person has, so.
I would just like to say one notice about that. The planning board in doing inspection, site inspections and then follow-up inspection. Professionals in forestry, wetlands. And so we've got forestry forest, clear cutting or timber jobs, she's going to do that. And we have a wetlands. Certified wetlands inspector who's willing to come check the wetlands and the job that we've done, because I'll be honest with you. The town does not have.
And of course, you know, this is, this is another where we're doing it through escrow, but it's because what hasn't happened for years and we've met quality professionals that we have reached out to and, you know, and we have to sit down and think about like, you know, escrow and how we're going to execute all this, but we have this all working for like the future for us. And, you know, we've landed two fantastic.
Kirk, that's sort of an order that we got is we'll get professionals to actually do some of this.
And that's, that would be on the short term because that's why you have someone in escrow who's, you know, looking for a certification of occupancy. And so you have that. To your question, a long term, how does that enforcement occur beyond that initial project and the review and approval process of that project? And that's where it comes back to the town. And that's where the town needs to really own that when there's any kind of building department measures that are outside of the domain of the planning department, that there's the wetlands inspector there and the yearly inspections, as you alluded to. For instance, on the project that you just recently referenced, the fan acres, you know, the yearly, most of that protected land is wetlands. And so the town could basically say, we own the responsibility of enforcing the majority of the, of this land being in compliance with remaining. It would be that wetlands inspector that would go on site, right? And so where does that dollar come from? Where does that money come from? And that's what the part of the recommendation is related to the long-term plan. So I think that there's, there needs, the town board needs to be sort of educated and there needs to be a commitment level insisted upon that enforcement become an integral part of their job as a town board, in my opinion, you know, because if all these changes will, will not be worth the effort if it were not for enforcement.
And it's not just the changes we're recommending. It's even if we made no changes. If we made no changes, there's still a significant enforcement need in every town. And, you know, the days, my feeling is the days where we used to have a, you know, a part-time building inspector that met with, with people who wanted to do something in the community, you know, Wednesday night from seven to nine and Saturday morning from eight to ten. You know, lots of towns are still doing that, but those days are long gone and a lot of towns haven't caught up to that. I did want to get back to one thing, though, in the density. I know, and I recognize that in a rural community, density is the number one thing that people are concerned about. We can write five hundred million pages and it often comes down to density. That's what people see. That's what people are worried about. But I wanted to remind the board that the districts that you have now, the R one point five, the R three, the R five, the R eight, those densities didn't change. You currently allow two family houses, that didn't change. You currently allow for multifamily houses, that didn't change. What we did change was we added in a really important concept that I think has gotten overlooked a little bit when it relates to density. And that is using net acreage. What net acreage means is that right now, under your current law, if you have a hundred acres, you get to count a hundred acres towards how many dwelling units on that person.
Depending on the zone.
Depending. So if you're in the, if you're in R five, you get fifty homes. The new zoning that we're recommending, though, says.
Twenty. Hundred acres.
Oh, yeah, twenty, twenty homes. But the the net acreage says that we recognize that not every inch of every parcel is developable and not every parcel is equal to every other parcel. And so the net acreage requires exclusion from the calculation of density of certain environmental features.
That's one of our positives.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So you all know that example that Nan's referencing. So add that hundred acres in R five. If thirty percent of it is wetlands, you now have seventy acres. That is, you might say, buildable, okay?
Or used to calculate.
Used to calculate density, not the hundred. So you reduce the density on that calculation alone, straight up at the top of the list.
So you just, just without, before you do anything, you, you, that alone has essentially lowered the density, not on every parcel, but on, in a town like Woodstock, many parcels.
Many, many.
So we have, on that particular issue. Wetlands are definable by certified wetland delineator can actually delineate those wet affected and that can be put on a map. And then you put your hundred foot buffer, that's exact. But when you get into steep slopes, exactly how are you going to measure how much acreage is steep slopes? Because you would have to topo the whole area. So if somebody has a hundred acres and you got to topo a hundred acres, you have to fly it. That's the only way to do that. And that's thirty thousand. It's just to topo, fly a topo. And that's steep slopes. Now, if we're talking about forestry, preserving forest areas, then you got to get a forester in who's going to so you get into some gray areas is to, this owner of a hundred acres that he bought is going to get his twenty units in there. Is going to bring some lawyers to the table when he's told he's only.
Well, but that, you know, we didn't include forested acres in our net calculation. And.
We have fragile soils, we have steep slopes, all those things can be considered.
Steep slopes we definitely.
Steep slope, it was. What?
A scenic overlay.
Well, the, the net acreage is a rule for every district. Not just, not just the scenic overall. So any parcel.
I meant like the areas of that hundred acres.
But the scenic, the scenic overlay then has additional restrictions that are, you know, where things are not allowed. There, there's nothing, there's no multifamily dwellings allowed with the exception of a single family, single unit of a three or fourplex. There's no multi.
Right.
Right. We remove the multifamily in R eight and anywhere in the.
In the scenic overlay. Any R eight or any scenic overlay. So those are off the table.
For subdividing, though, like.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we haven't.
We were not involved, this initiative did not involve anything associated with as-of-right housing. So the, the greedy developers, you're talking about coming into the sound or as-of-right developers, they're not the multifamily developers. You know, and so that's something that this town will need to pick up if they want to apply further restrictions because the, the issues that we're facing is the, the pressure that this planning board has been under, has been under single-family dwellings. Seen go. So that would be what I would consider to be as-of-right development pressure. This initiative did not touch that at all. We, we didn't go anywhere around an issue because we were just focused on creating other opportunities for housing. Right? And so the, the pressure that this town is experiencing in the examples of the type of pressure. I don't think those people are going to be building multifamily dwellings. I think they're going to be building individual homes.
And I, and I.
That's the pressure that we, that could, then there could be initiative that addresses that. We, we just now updated the scenic overlay. And so there's now new, new regulations there, some clarity in them. I think you are pleased with that effort. And so there needs to be additional efforts on this town's part to address the as-of-right elements, too. That was not our mandate.
The overall density. You know, you have a large area that, you know, in R one point five and R three. And, and for the environmental areas that you have, R eight, you know, eight acre density may not be the right density. I mean, those are different issues. And the scenic overlay, the way, you know, I've seen lots of scenic overlays in zoning. And, and I'm not disparaging it. It's, what you have is not the strongest scenic overlay. It doesn't address density. It addresses location of where things are going to go. And lots of scenic overlays in other places significantly reduce density. They have way more regulations. I mean, so there's lots of things that you can.
More room here now.
Yeah, there's, because we didn't really.
That's outside of our mandate.
Right. Um, the other thing, though, that I wanted to remind everyone, too, is that your current zoning has the ability for what's called a planned residential development, which is basically in, in, what I like to say is it's basically legalized spot zoning. It's basically someone comes to the town board and says, I'd like to do X. It doesn't fit into your zoning and your zoning allows that. Your zoning has that in it right now.
And that means the town board, right?
They have to go to the town board, but.
The first place is the town board. They get town board approval.
Right. So basically someone walks in with this great idea and if those five people on the town board agree that it's a great idea, it's a new zone. And there's no, it's basically planning by negotiation with the, with the developer. What we did is we took the planned residential development and called it a floating residential district, so that now all the rules are upfront. The only thing that we haven't done is mapped it. But we've put bounds on it, we put density on it, we put development standards on it, we put environmental protections on it in a way that your current zoning through the planned residential development has not.
And we lowered the density.
And we lowered the density because right now your zoning allows for a planned residential development with multifamily housing at a higher density. We've cut the density off in a floating residential district. And we've made it, we, we, if you look at the dimensions table, you'll see that the that a certain amount of development, up to forty units, goes through the site plan and the special use permit process through the planning board. Once someone comes with more than that, then they're forced to go to the town board and try and pose it as, you know, get an option for the floating residential district, which needs town board approval, which is a much more, and now we have the district that has all the rules and all the standards that are, would be expected in that district. So I actually think that what the housing task force did was tighten up this kind of loosey-goosey planned residential district that you have now. I think you're kind of lucky that you haven't had very many tapers. You know, there's, there's several communities north of Albany where they relied on, they had planned residential developments and, you know, they got taken advantage of and, and the, the course was long out of the barn before they realized that was not a good way to, to develop. So yes, are we, are we opening up other options for housing? Are we opening up in offering the middle, missing middle housing? Are we offering ADUs as a form of housing? Yes, we are. But I think that they are all done in a way that have, they're not just anywhere or anyhow, they have standards and processes to go through. And I think the improvements that are continually being talked about and made. I get this short-term rentals are an issue. They're an issue in every community, especially in the Hudson Valley, huge issue. And I think it's been the position of the task force that the basic short-term rental rules is in the short-term rental section, which is, was also not really, they're related and we can't ignore it, but that was really not, the, the task force really didn't feel like they should change the short-term rental rules, though that is a significant issue that most towns need to be addressing.
It's being addressed by the county and there's other areas. I wanted to come back to a couple of points that Nan just made. When it comes to the, the floating residential district, what that represents now is what a developer will read when they want to know what they can and cannot do in this town. And now the rules are set and they're clear and they're upfront and there are very little room for negotiation. That's why it was written for the developer. So for the developer to understand, whereas before there was, oh, let me go in here and I can negotiate my way through it, right? That's not possible now because of the criteria. The other thing is that when it came to the three and four, the middle housing, we, in the use tables, there's like in the water district, outside of the water district. And there's a very set, strict of criteria for multifamily housing, first of all. Much more strict than as-of-right housing, much more strict for every, on every aspect of it. But then it's also delineating, it's differentiated between inside the water district and outside the water district. And outside, it, the, it's, the acreages are doubled, I believe, that are required in order to accommodate. So there's a, there's a space issue that's immediately instilled upon that kind of project when it goes outside of the water district. So those are the kinds of, of criteria that we've built around these kinds of review and approval processes that you have control. You can point out and educate the property owner that you're trying to do something, it's not in the, in the water district and you, and these are the regulations here that are required. Whereas before shall, may, you know, the, the word shall is there.
One, one note I'd like to make on zoning.
May I make a comment?
But the reason the zones are set up the way they are, and the reason you have seven acre zone is because it's in the mountains. And back in the seventies, when they came up with septic systems were very difficult to build. And in the steep mountains and the rocky mountains, it was hard to get a septic system in. Five acres down to three acres for septic systems are. So that's how we have seven acre zoning. It was really based on the fact that it was hard to put a septic system in. And today, as you all know, engineering today, you put a septic system in a five by five block. I mean, you know, the technology is here to do anything.
Right. And the density should be set on the goals of the community.
Hello, hello. Thank you. Go ahead, Judy.
Judy, want to make a comment?
For some reason, your raina's picture is now in front here and I don't understand why that is.
I don't have your raina's picture in front. If you talk, we can hear you.
I have, I have a, I have a suggestion and a couple of comments and a question. My suggestion is Peter, whenever you talk, you move your hands and your sound cuts out.
There's a speaker issue, Judy, always on Zoom, and I know you're usually on this end of the table. Hybrid meetings kind of suck. That's all I'm going to say.
It's only happening when Peter is talking. So there's something that he's doing with his hands. Okay. Comment number one. Floating residential district, if I remember right, it's like sixty percent. Floating residential district, if I remember right, it's like sixty percent affordable, you can't do it at all. That is something that makes a major difference in the attractiveness of this to any kind of predatory developer. And it makes a major difference in the potential for affordable housing. Point two, I believe one of our newer changes is that multiple dwellings of any kind have to have at least ten percent affordable. Again, it makes it less attractive to the profit mark, the profit motive, and it makes it more likely to have affordable housing. Point number three is we have now one
Can't be more. But we've Why couldn't it be more than ten percent?
It can be more if that's what they choose, but most developers
But why can't we mandate it?
We could mandate it more, but most developers don't know how to build affordable housing, to your point. Um, you know, it's very difficult to build and then get your return on investment because of the constraints uh to building cost and such. So the building, the ten percent is a bonus incentive. It's a, it's a threshold for If you want to make a recommendation for higher, then make it. Make that recommendation because we felt like we have sixty percent of floating residential area, we have uh thirty three percent and twenty five percent at the single multifamily dwelling unit area because you have one unit needs to be affordable in each in the tri, so that's thirty three percent. In a quad, it's twenty five percent. Then you in you in the middle field, which is where the required change was from the county, is that that area that we didn't have mandated affordable housing now has ten percent. If you feel like it should be more, now's the time to speak up, all right? So that's something that could be, you could discuss amongst yourselves. But keep in mind that, you know, uh, that if you're going to force, like, I want you to think about what ha- like, if we were, if fam acres, use fam acres as an example. Okay, the fam acres was approved three months from now. They would be the same thing that they have, but they would have to find um ADUs. They'd have to de, you know, restrict or make mandate that four of those eleven lots have some type of affordable housing. Or they could address it by having one lot that had multi units on it, and that would be the end of it. Or they could say, no, we're going to keep it all single family homes, and now you have to have ADUs on four lots. So those are the kinds of numbers that you, and if you increase that to ten, beyond ten percent, you're now going to have someone who wants to build eleven homes, which is what that is, and you're going to force them to have six of those lots, seven of those lots, right? So just keep the, use that as an example, so when you apply your mandated level, that there's something that could work for a developer when they pencil it in. The other option we give in that is that the developer can say, I can't do affordable housing. I don't know how to do it. So the the option exists that we can, they can then donate that land to a nonprofit. Or make a deal with a nonprofit to build like Habitat for Humanity or such, okay? So there's ways around that. The planning board has the option to point in that direction. So there's ways in which the planning board can work with the developer to help achieve the end game of the mandates, okay? And the these are the options that we've had in. Take a close look at those. We'll share those with those details with you. And if you feel like there's a a better way in what you're trying to achieve, then let's talk about it, right? You know, that's what we're here for.
I'd like to bring up one other point.
I did not finish.
What's that?
I did not finish.
Uh, she, Judith wants to say something more.
I wanted to point out two things. One is, we have ADUs by right now, and people are not building even one. The county has recommended that any new ones, the first one, be affordable. And I believe we have accepted that in our revision process. Now, that's the documents that are out and about. But if we were going to have a lot of density from ADUs, we already have it. We don't. So I think that's a kind of a red herring. I also want to ask a question, and it has to do with this matter of steep slopes. Peter, the county has two foot contour lines. The feds and the state have twenty foot contour lines. I don't usually map two foot contour lines because it's too dense. But I want to ask you, as a person who knows this land well, if we are looking at a piece of property that we believe the steep slopes would allow us to restrict the amount of buildable land using steep slopes, wouldn't the two foot contour lines that the county has allow us to identify those areas? That's a question. I don't know what the answer is.
And I have the exact same question, um whether existing data that we have would be suitable to to get to the density calculation rather than forcing someone to go out and survey, you know, a hundred acre lot.
That's the way it is today. You know, it's the same with floodplains, it's the same with wetlands. Yeah, there's a wetland map you can look at, but it's not accurate. You gotta do in the field. The floodplain map, you gotta, you know, you gotta get a surveyor to tell you the elevation. You can't just go by those maps. It takes real field work.
But if someone would the planning board accept that? Um, if someone said, oh yeah, here's my parcel, here's the two foot contour lines and, you know,
We have a case like that. We we have seen a lot of like kids like that, where they're saying they're within the slope limit. Yeah, who says? Well, someone took a look at it. Yeah, I think that's fun. No, you gotta get a surveyor to go up there and actually give you the elevations. It is the It's, you can't be, well, it looks like or maybe.
So is that a moment where you could use escrow then? Again, that tool of the charging, the charging the
Technically, yes, eventually, but at first we can, their team, usually there's an engineer, a surveyor, and we would bring it to their attention that we are concerned about the steep slopes and we want some numbers, we want some data. So it would start on their end without escrow.
Right.
And then if there was still concern, yes, we would find a professional, and it would be on the applicant's dime. Yes.
Yes.
So one one point I want to make is really important about Woodstock. Talking about development, you have to remember this is a mountain town and it farming mountain town, it was meadows. And all our roads, except for the ones down here, were cattle paths, were wagon trails. And they widened until you got to the cliff on one side and the bank on the other side and now two That's most of our roads. When we're talking about development, no one's mentioned the roads. How you get around if you had another hundred houses on a certain road? The roads aren't adequate. And that's something that never comes into consideration in the zoning codes, but the planning board has the power to actually question whether a road is adequate enough for a proposed development.
Yeah. Right, yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, that is, that is a a significant consideration in the subdivision. You have to look at, and if you have really long roads, you every five hundred feet, you have to have the turnoff.
Yeah, not just multi families, if you're talking, you know, plan, you know, if you're talking a lot of units in a small area, then the road has to be taken into consideration.
Well, well, I think that's an excellent point. We can make sure in our standards Yeah, we make sure we have, uh, you know, as a standard adequacy of roads to serve whatever's being proposed. If we haven't
That's a great point.
If we haven't emphasized that enough, then that's a really good point to make sure we do.
Hey, board members, go ahead.
Because in particular, affordable housing almost always should be in the walkable part of town, you know, and
Or someplace where uh public transportation is available.
Public transportation or bike paths, and we seem to
Other forms.
I don't know that we're addressing any of that anywhere, but it seems, it seems to me that Woodstock needs to be, the hamlet needs to be more dense. But then we also have to address traffic. And I know Complete Streets has this great idea of putting parking on the periphery so that tourists are not driving into town, and that alleviates a lot of pressure. And that just made so much sense to me, but um I would like to see a lot more density in town, affordable density in town, and less outside of town because some people can't afford cars, but they need groceries, you know.
I think that, you know, to your point, and I I love hearing this because we had, we had a Complete Streets uh event a few months ago, someone, Jeff Olson, came into town and spoke, and he's nationally known. You know, Jeff. And um, and one of the things he said was that housing and transportation are linked, and so there needs to be a holistic approach to, and that's what you're addressing. There needs to be a holistic approach to affordable housing in this case, okay? We had the mandate to address creating housing op- housing opportunities. We didn't have any other mandate outside of that. We didn't have any mandate to focus and establish transportation modes or you know, things of that nature. The county, I believe that the county should consider public transportation in areas such as Woodstock that really focused the needs of the town. Not all the, all the transportation now goes from Kingston out to Bel Air and back again, and moves people from Sargertes to, you know, whereas if you have hyper local solutions where people are able to move around and get to the library and then go to Hannaford and come back into the village, and that ten, that bus never leaves, that's more realistic for this town, right? So the Jidway is something that was mentioned in the comprehensive plan.
What is it, Jidway?
A Jidway. It's a Jidway, it's a, it's a um, a mode of transportation where it's highly concentrated. Just moves around town.
Like, right, one town. Like, you think one town, it's not going to any other
Doesn't go to Phoenisha, doesn't go to Sargertes.
It's not countywide, it's one town.
Run town.
You mean a jitney.
Yeah.
Like a jitney.
jitney, I'm sorry, I was mispronouncing.
I want to, I want to point something out. In our, in our code discussions, and I believe we put this in for a large subdivision, you have to include bike paths and walking paths that go somewhere.
Oh, yeah, that's already in the code. So walkability has been acknowledged and emphasized and required now, again, for you, the planning board, to insist that it happen in any kind of development that's multifamily, okay? Bike paths, pedestrian, and all the sort. That's already there, but we're waiting for the Complete Streets committee comments. And maybe there's other areas of refinement.
But what if it's similar to our eighth district? Where's, where are those sidewalks going to go?
Well, again, we're not, we're not, we're not really emphasizing that. We're emphasizing mostly in the water district, okay? And and then where there's not, where there's a, a non, where it's non-water district, then you have uh space requirements, and we didn't really get into those because we anticipated most of the most of the uh development that's really is necessary needs to stay as close to the water district as as possible, possibly with the, you know, with the realm of of maybe, I don't want to say the word, but adjustments to the existing water supply system that incorporates other, you know, like it was done on three seventy five to incorporate the development over there on the on uh, over there by the commercial property.
There's areas competition into sewer and water.
Right, right. And so, you know, there's other areas that are very, very near to the water district that would be uh those are the kind of ideal beyond water district. I don't anticipate that there is uh going to be very uh ways of creating great success of having a massive development and will. How are you going to do that?
Can I, can I say something to?
I don't know. Is this
So
Yes.
I just wanted to respond to the gentleman in the black shirt. I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but
Brayden.
Brandon?
Brayden.
Brayden.
Chats about the library.
Hi, um, so my, um, I wanted to say something to affordability and being in the village and um so I'm a, I'm one of the people, I'm on the housing committee, but I'm one of the people that have that is looking for affordable housing. I can't afford my own home, on and on and on. All the things is, when you live in the country, having grown up here and lived in country and lived in city in my life nationally and internationally, is that when you're in the country, it's kind of nice if you can live in the village, but there's not a lot of options for food that's affordable necessarily. When I was a kid and I went to school, like grew up here, we had, the CBS used to be called Grand Union, and that had some affordable food in it. But it's not sunflower and meat market and CBS are very, very expensive. Sun frost doesn't have sometimes some produce, but meats and cheeses and other things are not, they're really expensive. So as a person, I have to have a car, and I don't necessarily have that option. It'd be great if I could walk around, but I need a car to get to um, other places for sources of food or clothes or, you know, toiletries that are in my financial, you know, budget. So a lot of times in the car, it, when you're living in the car, it, it's not so much where you go or that you live in the village or outside of the village when you're living in the country. It's more about being able to get to where you can have affordable food. We can't, as the town, change what businesses and and if they'll make affordable food or food affordable, so we have to go somewhere else. Like, I have to be able to get to Hannaford's. Um,
And that, that gets into the transportation issue.
Target, stuff like that, so.
But that would change when, when more affordable housing
Supply is created. When the supply is there, then that would change the dynamic of the need.
Sometimes, I, I mean, not always.
Gets into that holistic perspective again, and that's part of the conversation that needs to uh be at the county level for that matter. I mean, you know, you have Jim Esker with a fifteen million dollar proposal on the table for affordable housing to be built in this county. So some of that money is going to go, you know, holistically, not just houses, not just apartments, but, you know, other measures um that we're talking about.
Even the pedestrian lanes, the bike paths.
Right, right. Giving accessibility for people who do not, you know, like, right now, employers, they would love to have opportunities for people to live in their town so that an employee could work there and they don't need a car. Because having a place to live and having a car is to what Uranus pointing out to. Some people need it, but that really limits a lot of possibilities. You take that, you take that need for a car away, you now have a whole lot of different possibilities, right? So that's, that's part of what the hope is, is that the initiatives that we're, that we're putting in the code could create more opportunities for there to be more systems put in place to support mobility and support access. And which quite frankly would, uh, you know, if if we, if we increase housing security in our town, we will increase our economy. There's no doubt about it. That's just they go hand in hand. So those, those are the underlying goals, right? But that is, the the code is like one step in the step in the walkway towards that, you know? It's, it's one important one, but it's one of the, and the next is the recommendations to the town board and holding their feet to the fire and and following up on those recommendations, and then creating transportation solutions, so there's options available for people. Then you get into parking. You don't need to build as much parking, like in the Woodstock Commons. They don't use a lot of that parking, you know?
Yes, I know.
So these are the things that we can understand as a town in terms of bringing it into the realm of smart development, that if you can create these other options of transportation, you now put less pressure on you to require the amount of parking that is currently in the goal, right? So these are the, these are, but these are all the things we need. It's a process, right? And we have to prove it. We have to prove it to our town, that this process, that the code, the changes we're making, I think were you expressed initially, the the tension that exists, and I think others expressed the tension that exists. Jude expressed uh the tension that exists between environmental conservation and housing. How there's always this thing like this. One attempt we made is to cre- create a sense of harmony between the need of housing and the need to conserve, because those are the two biggest values. The two biggest things that people, the public, our residents stated, they wanted in the comprehensive plan. Conserve our open space and create more housing opportunities, right? We, the code, and tell me if I think, I think we did, we do, did our best to try to harmonize. That's what the conservation based development is, is on. That's where, you know, the net acreage is based on. These different ways and trying to establish uh what the environmental restrictions are of each and every lot, right? Uh, in 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 across our town, and what those restrictions may are, what they are now and what they exist, and then you, the planning board, can apply that restriction in the approval process, right? That's the important tool that we want to give, that we wanted to give to you. So these are the kinds of things that we felt like, and that helps create the harmony between housing and conservation. In my, you know, in in the way of you, in terms of how you can do it with zoning, right? Is there, you know, you had a list that you read off last time. Are you, in your report, exactly this going to be in that, in that report? Is there, you know, you had a list that you read off last time. Are you, in your report, exactly this going to be in that, in that report? Your comments to us.
We're gonna go over that once you guys leave and just go through. I will, no, no, you're perfect. Um, and then I will submit that and I will email you guys everything. We just gotta go over and make sure we're all on the same page and.
Great. Well, we have, uh, we're anticipating and receiving your comments. Um, you know, sometime in every, in early portion, maybe of July, right?
I'm sending, I'm sending these tonight.
Oh, good. So we have a, we, we tentatively scheduled on the eighteenth will be our next meeting. The task, task force will be meeting. And we will begin. We will have reviewed and discuss, and be ready to discuss and move on the things that you present to us.
Next.
At that time. And so, uh, and then there'll be subsequent meetings beyond the eighteenth, and if we don't get to some of those and we need more time to, to discuss them, then we will meet again and discuss those. So that's the process we're in. We're organizing the comments and as they've come in from individuals and from committees. And, and I believe that we're doing our best to try to instill that uh, people are being heard.
I wanna just say too, like, this whole process, so many things happen and we are the last to know. And I say we as the planning board, and I'm putting myself in there. We're the last to know. And I, my eyes are open and I try to see everything that goes through, thinking of you and what we need to know. We have been involved in this from the gate, whether it's Judy or Kirk or Nan. And thank you. That's it. That's just thank you.
I would like to say something.
Yeah, Judy?
Yeah, all of the, all of the meetings in which the housing oversight task force is looking at comments and making adjustments are now going to be open to the public, so people can watch them on Zoom.
And you know, one of the things that we did early on was we had a series of interviews and we talked to a lot of the affordable housing developers and they want to know what the rules are.
Certainty.
They want the, they wanna be able to say, if you tell us what the rules are and we follow those rules, then we will have a more efficient yes at the end. And they um, they weren't looking for, let us put it everywhere anyhow under any condition. I, I didn't hear anybody say that at all. I think that they were really looking for, offer us some opportunities and tell us what the rules are and what the process is. And that's what we, you know, we tried to make it clear. And they, you know, it'll be an economic decision for them. Um, whether it works for them or not.
And yeah, the big part of that is the litigation that they have, that they will need to build into their projects if that clarity isn't there. So that's also a part of the formula that they were saying to us. They have to think about that they're going to be sued. You know, if there's not the clarity in the code. So the clarity in the code will allow there to be more certainty on the developer's side, on the neighbors, other members of the community and the planning board. So that, that clarity is, is such a powerful tool. And that's what we did our best. I think we're trying to do further to build clarity into, so that especially the board has everything it needs to.
Right, we wanna give you the tools and the, so that you have the information and the direction to back up your decisions.
Yeah.
So if there's a hole or a gap that you have noticed that you need to let us know about, then let us know about that.
One thing that we've, I wanna acknowledge a comment that Peter made some weeks ago about the state uh, plane coordinates. And so that is in the code, that is now being added to the subdivisions aspect. So things like that. It's, your comments matter right now, right?
I would like to add something to that. One, one of the things that, that dude said that I think is correct is that while I personally find the current description of those square footage for an ADU totally mind-bending and I can never figure out what it means, what we have said in the current draft, which is it has to be subordinate, probably isn't detailed enough.
The ADU square footage?
Yeah, I think we have to be more clear than we are.
Okay.
It's better than what's in the existing law, cause you can at least understand it, but it is much too, it's much too general.
Good. Thank you, Jude. We'll definitely make note of that. So really look forward. Thank you for your time. I know you wanted to get us out of here.
Thank you.
Continue to want to do other business and, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for everyone's comments.
Yeah, tha- thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Laura.
Bye-bye.
Okay, alright. Okay, we got a few other things to deal with, um. You wanna do that? Or when we do the.
No, and are we just sending this as is? Okay, so let me just make sure I have it right. So yes, we're sending this as is. You guys have all seen this. Um, and I added uh, just as a, as a negative, but just the question of higher than ten percent affordable. Again, I think your concern should make, I don't.
I don't care if a developer makes less profit.
Exactly. So I just have a question of higher than ten percent. Um, I'm gonna add that and then follow-up concerns, adequacy of roads for all projects. I think that's very important. So there are the two that I added. You guys have seen this and seen this and seen this. We're sending it.
I mentioned like a holistic town planning approach.
Oh, yeah, with the, with the transportation.
We did, we do have transportation that's really on here, John, and put the transportation. I can put a holistic.
A jitney type.
The town-based transportation.
I don't think that that's, I don't think that jitney can be part of zoning code. I think it's a recommendation. I think it's an important one.
Well, concern is what I'm gonna put this under. These are concerns.
Okay, but please add my comment about being more specific about the uh, the size limits on ADUs.
Okay, I'll add size limits. I have a bunch on ADUs, so I'll add size limits to that too. Okay. Done. And, okay, so we got jitney and then.
Not just a jitney, but a holistic town.
Town-based transportation need. We don't even need jitney. We just need town-based transportation. Holistic approach. So I'm just gonna.
Don't do what things can do.
What they didn't.
Oh, they got these buses that are eco-friendly. They cost two hundred thousand dollars and it costs sixty thousand dollars a year to maintain. And as they go by, you'll see one person in them, two persons in them, you know, so then they made it free. It still doesn't help.
So if we basically say holistic approach, everyone's lifespan involved, like as a town, that makes sense to me, right? Town, whole, whole town. Okay, alright.
Alright.
We can move on to the next. Alright. Going tonight, guys. Thank you.
Alright, a couple other things you gotta do. Um, I make a motion for the draft resolution for Johnson and Thomas, which was the only one that went from a non-outer occupied to an owner.
And it was a transfer.
So, um. On favor, we're gonna.
Yes.
And uh, the other one is for uh,
Watson and.
Watson and, and, and both of those are for owner occupied, so.
They were the town.
Yeah, so.
Second. No, you don't. Who can say?
You have a second?
Alright, and you don't even have to say yes. So we can go through a vote. I know Peter's a no.
No.
James? These are the town board ones that we had a whole conversation and I did write beautiful resolution with these conditions that you guys asked me to.
Yes.
They, they didn't know it was a town law.
Jennifer?
Why do we have to pass it?
No.
That's why you can just pass it. Judy?
Yes. But they did not send us anymore.
Thank you. We have more coming. There's fifteen. When they're over, we're gonna have a meeting.
I got lots of those.
I know you do. And I support you.
I mean, if I do say no, what does, I mean, what?
I can't pass a resolution.
So what happens though? The town, we get sued? The town gets sued?
No, he said no.
John had to say.
John is gonna ask, why are we on the list? And they're gonna answer, because we paid our county tax, but we didn't know it was a town law. Judge is gonna say, hmm, when the state true proposal for speeding, you say you didn't know this is speeding law?
So we didn't need to say yes.
Go well in court.
I like, I support all of you and, and you always have a right to say no, but. We're all about mitigating. And we added conditions on these resolutions based on last meeting.
I think we're just trying to make this doesn't go away.
Are these fifteen legacy uh, yeses?
But are we, anything on the thing where they're gonna add these to the total?
Yes, I think I have them in. I know, I've been.
Even longer for somebody new to get one, because.
No, the, the comment is simple. As long as we continue to say yes, they will continue to send them to us. Stop this, I believe, is by putting up a wall. Wall is no vote.
I support that. Then, I support the wall.
Woo, I don't like that one. Alright. The Valentine Timber Harvest I visit with Peter is Saturday. I will not be there. My sister comes in and I have.
I have to work.
You wanna come out and clean the room and then make a bed and for three bodies? So that's Saturday, July first.
I don't think I can do it.
So I think it's June and Brayden.
Okay.
We need to get it done, so we can move on to the future. We, we had a scenic overlay question. I had a nice old moment, Connor, um.
He wanted to know why it was twelve hundred feet. Well, why not eleven hundred? Why not thirteen hundred? It's a good question and it goes to the point of what's seen. I guess the idea was you could see from.
I didn't know somebody was asking twelve hundred feet away, you shouldn't be, oh, above sea level. Oh, I see, I see.
Technically what we.
Which is the tips of these mountains.
Okay.
That's the scenic overlay that all the scenic overlay codes are applied to. Now, other towns that have scenic codes, don't go by the tips of the mountains. They actually go by what you see below. They actually say, this is seen and therefore should be developed carefully or differently or whatever. So I couldn't tell you why twelve hundred was picked. I guess obviously that's what you can see over the treetops when you look up at the mountains.
Depends on where you're standing. Because everything's a different level.
What Peter had said when he wrote back to us was, he's not sure where the twelve hundred feet originated from. But scenic vistas, as described by other hand, include areas that are scenic as viewed from roads. My thoughts are that we should have scenic areas much like CEA and not just restricted elevation. I think between his answer and Judy's was pretty similar.
I mean, the, the, the good thing about having a twelve hundred feet is you can actually. It's technical. You can go up there without timber. You're at twelve hundred feet. So it's a specific area.
The fact from the change of seasons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd see my boots from my property on three seventy-five.
Yeah.
So we know we're working with twelve hundred.
I mean, I think twelve hundred is just kind of a straightforward standard thing to.
But if they wanna add some sort of scene, I'm gonna use your words and I'm gonna send that back to Connor. I think we support Peter's, right?
I don't think we have to even worry about any of it anymore because of the forest fires are gonna have any scenes anymore.
Line has to be drawn somewhere.
Guys, we don't have a meeting next week.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome. So I will see you all at the like twentieth. The twentieth is the next meeting, yes. I will not be in the office next week. I'll come back on the den, so don't call me. Don't test numbers. Kidding, kidding. You're all of my digits.
And they're open to adjourn.
Yes. Yeah.
Alright, everybody.
Thanks, guys.